Good afternoon and welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of Monday, August 19th, 2024.
This time I'll do it with the microphone. Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of August 19th, 2024. Please be advised, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chambers by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a short moment of silent meditation, and please remain standing if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item must first register and sign in at the table located at the, in the lobby. The council shall require any member of the public addressing the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization they represent, and their address unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. Each speaker should state whether they are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. Anyone wishing to speak on an addenda item should come forward after the clerk reads the item and the applicant has presented. After public comments, the applicant may make short, one short rebuttal. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. We ask that all speakers strive for civility and allow the business of council to proceed unimpeded. Madam Clerk, will you please read the first item of business?
Our first item of business today for the city council meeting on Monday, August 19th, 2024 is a reminder that due to the Labor Day holiday, city council will not meet on Monday, September 2nd. And then next on our agenda would be our consent agenda, Sections 1, Sections 2, and 3.
All right. Is there anyone wishing to come forward to speak on an item on consent? Anyone here present wishing to speak on an item on consent? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, you may move us forward.
We can vote on these items. Items 2A and 2B were introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Beckyus. Any discussion? Please call the rule.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
All right. Next item of business or public, is a public hearing on liquor resolutions.
I'll call items 4A and 4B together. Application of Big Ten Sports LLC doing business as Big Ten Sports Bar &amp; Grill for a Class C liquor license located at 130 North 10th Street, and the related manager application of Corey Schaefer.
All right. Is there anyone here to speak on item 4A and B? Big Ten Sports? Good afternoon and welcome.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, to either place. Thank you very much. Would you please introduce yourself and the name of your business?
Stacy Schaefer, and it's Big Ten Sports Bar &amp; Grill.
All right. Welcome, Ms. Schaefer.
Thank you.
Um, does anyone have any questions for Ms. Schaefer about the application before us this afternoon?
Could you just tell us a little bit about the, the application itself and then the, the new location?
Absolutely. Uh, the, specifically on the application?
You can just tell us a little bit about the, the location and, and the, why you're applying for the application today.
So the application is for the location at the Old Rosie's Building downtown at 130 North 10th Street.
The old what?
Rosie's Building downtown.
Boomer's Praney. There you go. Continental Trailways.
Yeah.
Those were the days.
Yeah.
So our original location of Big Ten Sports Bar is in Columbus, Nebraska. Uh, we're opening a second location to be downtown in Lincoln, um, providing a sports-minded atmosphere, also a social atmosphere, and a restaurant where people can enjoy elevated sports bar food, uh, place for corporate meetings, family activities, birthday parties, just an all-around good family environment with sports.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Uh, when do you open?
We are hoping to open on August 28th. We're ambitious.
All right.
Football season.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Crossing our fingers for you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on this application, either in favor or in opposition? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, let's move ahead.
I'll call items 4C and D together. Application of Welcome Back LLC doing business at Salties Lodge for a Class C K liquor license located at 1339 West O Street, and the related manager application of Thomas S. Ricas.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon and welcome.
Thank you. Uh, Thomas Ricasis. Um, so I guess I could piggyback off of what you had asked the prior question, right? Um, for a long time now, I feel that Westo needs to be a little bit more community-focused and driven within the businesses, giving people in and around the area a good place to enjoy food, enjoy, uh, watching some local sports, um, and partner with other businesses within the community. So we're looking to drive, uh, family-operated business, uh, to have customers coming in from local businesses like Kinetik all the way around through, as we were just speaking, the Salt Dogs and, and other local businesses as well.
All right. Does anyone have any other questions?
Is that where the name came from? Salties Lodge?
Uh, did the homework and, uh, back in the 1800s from Salt Creek. Um, I live in Hickman, and Salt Creek actually goes right by my house. So we, uh, we wanted to pull in from that and a little marketing ploy, like a guy that used to work there, his name was Salty, and it's his lodge since it's a cabin, so we'll have some fun with it.
Perfect. Perfect.
All right. Well, all right.
Good luck.
Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Would anyone here like to speak on this application, either in favor or in opposition? Seeing no one coming forward, let's move on to the next item.
I'll call items 4E, 4F, G, 4H, and 4I together. Application of Bar at the Yard LLC doing business as Longwells, as well as Yard Investments LLC doing business as Gate 25, Ian Family LLC doing business as Hero 88, Land Shark Realty Group LLC doing business as Tanks, and Homegrown Industries Lincoln doing business as Mellow Mushroom for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 308 feet by 74 feet at Canopy Street from Artic U Street on August 31st, 2024, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., September 7th and 14th, 2024, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:30 a.m., September 20th, 2024, from 12:00 p.m. to 12:30 a.m., October 5th, 2024, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:30 a.m., and November 2nd and 23rd, 2024, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., or a.m.
All right. Is there anyone here to speak on this application? Come on down.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Chadwick Fisher with Hero 88. So just wanted to come represent kind of the group. Uh, another football season's upon us, another street closure that we're going after, so wanted to be able to answer any questions if you may have one.
All right. Are there any questions for this application? All right. We don't have any questions. I know you've been here before and you guys have figured out how to do SDLs very well.
We're trying. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd hate to see everybody on the application.
I love seeing everybody on the application. All right. Uh, is anyone here to speak in favor or in opposition to this SDL application? Is anyone here to speak on this application? Seeing none?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Madam Chair, seeing no one else coming forward, I'd like to move that we approve items 4A through 4I.
And second? Second, Beckyus?
We're missing Justin Delaurey.
We are. Alrighty, um, if there's no discussion, let's move to the vote.
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
All right. Thank you. Best of luck.
You're good? Yep. Good.
All right, Madam Clerk, let's move ahead. Public hearing resolutions.
I'll call item 5A, approving a tax levy request from Lincoln Airport Authority.
All right.
Good afternoon. John Olson, Board Chair for the Lincoln Airport Authority.
And Jerry Winkelman, Director of Administration and Finance for the Lincoln Airport Authority.
All right. Welcome.
So good afternoon, Chair Washington, members of the city council. As I mentioned, my name is John Olson. I'm the Board Chair for the Lincoln Airport Authority. You've met Jerry Winkelman, our Director of Finance. There's a few other of our team here in the audience. Chris Hove, Assistant Board Chair, Chad Lay, Director for Facilities and Planning, uh, David Herring, our Executive Director, who you'll hear from in a little bit, and then our, our Counsel, Bill Kudlek. So, just some introductions. Um, we appreciate the opportunity to be here and talk to you today. I'd like to begin with a little bit of introductory commentary, just to give you a little bit of background, and then Jerry will kind of go into a presentation on some of the details of the, of the projects that we're talking about as it specifically relates to the tax levy. Um, from there then, we'll talk about kind of plan going forward, what happens after this, and then of course, we're here to take any questions that you might have as well. I know that, uh, time is of the essence. I, I know the content. I think this will take more than five minutes, so if I may, could I ask for a little additional time today, please?
It is generously given.
Okay, thank you. So just by way of background, I've been on the, the board now for a little bit over, over three years, and during this time, I've certainly come to appreciate the complexities and the nuances associated with overseeing an airport. We've got roughly 5,000 acres of property to look after. We've got a vibrant general aviation presence, business presence with the businesses that serve aviation, a military presence, an active industrial park, and of course, uh, our commercial air service. Certainly now, three years later, learning curve is flat, but it's through this process that I and others on the board have sharpened our vision and become more aware of what we think is important in growing the airport, uh, to the future. We were put here through an election process, just like you, and I want to assure you that we take this role very, very seriously. The care and the stewardship of the airport is of utmost importance to us, which in turn supports the community of Lincoln. We value our partnership. So much of the infrastructure that we have on the airport, in particular over on the west side, was gifted to us by the federal government in 1966, when the Lincoln Air Base, as we know it, pulled out. They handed this over to, to us. That's nice, very nice of them. But when you combine that with all the other assets that we've got, it amounts to a lot, okay? We've got 36 miles of runway and road pavement, 148 structures, I believe, six bridges, waterways that we use to manage and mitigate floodwaters that move through, I believe it's Oak Creek, if I'm not mistaken, rail lines, and a heck of a lot more out there. It's, there's a lot to take care of. In the 60 years since then, though, I would say that the level of care and maintenance to look after those assets maybe hasn't been where it should be, and I don't want to question the whys and the wherefores. I look at it and we look at it for what it is today. And then we have commercial air service. The headwinds that we face as an airport have been pretty well documented as of late. There's been some articles in the newspaper. The Journal started a wonderful investigative report on the impact essential air service has had, had on Lincoln. Beyond that, we've got the current state of the airline industry with limited number of pilots, limited number of airplanes. Um, we've got proximate airports, uh, primarily Omaha to the east, and then, like I said, the $32 million of federal funding that flows to essential air service airports, not Lincoln, every year to generate commercial air service, okay? To us, we view that as a challenge, okay? So what do we do as an airport authority? Do we accept those headwinds and do nothing about it, or do we look at it and figure out how are we going to manage that as an authority and as a city? Our airport is an economic engine. It drives a lot of business. There's studies that have been done. We've got one that I think is eight or nine years old now that said we do over a billion dollars annually of an economic activity. We're probably going to commission another, another one of those this week, but it churns a lot of business, a lot of business. So how did we get here? So the advancement of our budget and this tax levy request to you is the outcome of a normal and customary process that is prescribed to us. Each year, typically in June, we conduct an open board work session where we openly talk about the budget, think about where we want to go with it, and talk about various options. We follow that up then with an open public hearing, and then the board acts on the budget, perhaps makes changes, okay? Uh, quite frankly, this year was no different. We had that open work session on June 24th. Uh, on June 27th, we had the public hearing, and later on that same day, uh, we had a formal board meeting where our budget was approved. I should mention that in the months leading up to that, though, uh, we were, we were busy as a board having individual conversations, one-on-one conversations with stakeholder groups, interest, interest groups, elected officials, gathering from them what was important and things that we thought would be important as we considered our budget. So we tried to gather as much intelligence as we could. And then in July, our, our request was submitted to you, the city, in accordance with the statutes. All right, so we're getting closer to the projects, but before Jerry takes over, I, I want to provide, provide just a little bit of context. So the way your resolution is set up is kind of in two parts. Uh, there's the first part that talks about the bonded projects, and then there's the second part that talks about the non-bonded capital projects and operational uses. She'll hit on both of them, uh, both parts, but she'll spend the most time on the second part, the non-bonded capital projects and operational uses. It's important to know that while this represents a one-year request, the needs that we have of, as an airport, as it relates to capital and growth projects, taking care of that which we have and providing for growth, is a long list that amounts to much more than what we're going to talk about for one year, okay? Um, we've got about $6 million in the near term on deferred maintenance, and if you look out to 2028, we've got about $10 million of growth-related projects. So the list is great, and we ask Jerry and the team to prioritize what you have and say, okay, for the next year, let's talk about what might be possible. However, we've got to bear in mind that flexibility has to exist. Things happen daily, if not weekly, that cause us to say, all right, maybe, maybe the resources are better used in this way. So what we have today is what we think we see, as we know today, but things do come up, so there needs some amount, some amount of flexibility needs to be, needs to be present. Could be an air, air carrier comes up. We don't have anything today, but we're actively marketing, believe me. We've got folks out there talking to, talking to the airlines. We've got people helping us out with that. We're working it hard because people want more air service. We do hear that a lot. We really do. Um, so that, something like that could come along too. We want, we want the ability to react to that. Uh, as it relates to the operational levy, in particular for air service, two years ago, we couldn't even consider this, but for a constitutional amendment, it was legislative resolution 283, it was approved by an 80% margin, that gives us the ability to use operational funds for air service enhancement, okay? And then the last thing I'll say is that we're always looking for ways to grow our, grow our own money on property. We have a, a good industrial park. Granted, it needs a little bit of love, but the best kind that we can get is grants or when we can produce it ourselves, and believe me, we're trying hard to do that. We just need a little help and the gap is a little big right now. So with that, Jared, you kind of want to walk through some projects, please?
I'd love to.
Okay.
Chairperson Washington and members of the council, I appreciate the time to talk to you today and to explain some of these projects that we're looking at. I would note that while most of the projects on the Airport Authority's current list could be bonded, uh, the three largest projects offer the most attractive opportunity for investors, so 6.7 million of the Airport Authority levy will fund bonded indebtedness. The terminal bond provided $54 million to fund the construction and remodel of our lovely new terminal. An additional 15 million will be used to fund a small percentage of the runway project and a major remodel of our snow removal equipment building. The majority of the funding for the runway, as you know, will be provided by the FAA and the military. The FAA has determined that all federal funding that the authority is eligible for, for a five-year period, will be solely allocated to the runway project. While the Airport Authority has not used its operational tax levy capacity since 1986, as John mentioned, we have significant infrastructure and maintenance needs on public roadways, bridges, runways, and taxiways. In the next couple of slides, I'll provide sort of a snapshot of what some of these projects look like today. Uh, the, this, this is the West Cummings Street Bridge Repair Project. Uh, the City Department of Payment and Bridge Maintenance inspected the bridges, bridges at Mathis Airport Road and West Cummings Street. They identified a number of specific maintenance needs. This bridge particularly has concrete delaminating from the internal reinforced steel structure. A Benish structural engineer inspected the bridge in 2019 and proposed a scope of repair, work, and an estimate at about $800,000. This building is a legacy building left over from the Lincoln Air Force Base operation in the 1950s and 60s. Over the last two decades, it has quite literally fallen into a state of disrepair. It currently represents a safety hazard, and demolition is recommended as soon as possible, with an estimated cost of $200,000. This cute little device is a piece of equipment that is essentially a towing dolly for aircraft with blown or flat tires. So in an emergency situation where a landed aircraft has a tire or wheel issue, the airport currently doesn't have a great solution to quickly move that aircraft off the runway. With one runway under construction, the ability to quickly clear the remaining runway is critical for us. This could be a piece of modern art, but is in actually the taxiway, uh, called Taxiway P. It's a short taxiway adjacent to the terminal aircraft apron. It consists of asphalt that is at the end of its useful life. Uh, not completing this $250,000 project could negatively impact the airport's ability to maintain current levels of commercial and charter flight operations. Several panels have failed on Aviation Road in the intersection of the access road to the fuel farm. This is a critical intersection for us, and this $250,000 project is needed for the safety of fuel trucks moving to and from the fuel farm. The asphalt mill and overlay project on this stretch of Northwest 38th Street was completed in 2014. It is due for partial depth repair and asphalt seal coat every five to seven years. The $225,000 project is overdue and will extend the life of this section of road which serves as an arterial through street and primary access for industrial park tenants. These projects are examples of the work that is necessary. Each of these projects will be discussed and approved during the Airport Authority's Board of Directors' public meetings after funding is in place and immediate needs have been determined. Along with providing safe, reliable, commercial, and general air service, the authority is responsible, again as John said, for 148 structures, including hangars in the terminal, six bridges, rail facilities, and 36 miles of paved roadways and runways, including one of the longest runways in the country. Ensuring the safety, longevity, and efficiency of the airport's assets is a crucial requirement. Implementing effective infrastructure conservation, preservation, and upkeep safeguards public, business, and military investment and bolsters the resilience and sustainability of the Lincoln Airport. The immediate and short-term needs laid out in our 10-year master plan and on longstanding capital project lists total more than $30 million. This list is about 6.3.6 million, and they are the priorities the Airport Authority has, currently needs to allow the airport to invest in its infrastructure and meet its goals of safety and preservation. Thank you.
Do you have any questions on the projects? Um, you can ask them later, but I would like to kind of talk now about our process going forward, or we can take some questions as you wish.
Does anyone have questions right now, or would you like to hold your questions until the end? All right. Proceed.
Okay. With that, if, Dave, if you could join us up here?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the council, Dave Herring, Executive Director for the Authority. I do appreciate the, the additional time granted, uh, this afternoon, so I will be relatively brief in my comments, just to touch on the process. Um, this is, this is all new to us as well. Obviously, the airport went some 36 years without assessing a tax levy, and so only the last couple of years that we've done that, and certainly, the operational levy has been even longer, and so I did want to touch on it. If you look, as, as Jerry and John both laid out, there are really three different areas of this levy that all are kind of going to have their own process. First, you have the bonded indebtedness projects. Those are really kind of self-explanatory and for the most part, self-automated. Um, once that is approved, um, the amount that we're asking for lines up with the amount that the airport is paying out to those bonds, and those are kind of just paid as those are due on the payment schedule on the bond. So that one's kind of automated. But then you get into the discretionary projects, and each of those have a little bit of a different area, and so when you look at the, what we'll call discretionary capital projects, so things like the buildings and roadways and bridges and all that, uh, Jerry mentioned that it's the intent of us to ensure that we are not expending any of these tax funds without them going through a public meeting. So even though there are certain discretionary rights given to staff to expend funds, um, these will fall outside of those, of those exemptions, if you will, and so every single penny that we spend on any tax money will come through a public meeting and be approved by the board. Obviously, we want to ensure, uh, that we are following appropriate processes, you know, getting the best product costs, et cetera, et cetera, but we want to make sure that we're also demonstrating that to the public, that they can look, see those contract costs, and know exactly where their tax money is going. So then that brings us to the air service side of things. Uh, obviously, the fact that-
Sorry, I'm going to stop you for a minute. Could you two please knock it off or leave?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was paying attention. What's-
They're giggling and horsing around. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no worries. I appreciate that. Um, and then, so when you get to the air service side of things, obviously, the airport having gone through a state audit takes the results of that state audit very seriously, and one of the things that we wanted to do is ensure a process that allowed for enhanced evaluation, oversight, and transparency. And so the air service process is a little more significant. Uh, in, in the case of it, it's really kind of a four-pronged, uh, evaluation process that would go on, or, or, um, implementation process. The first step is really what's going on right now. All of the legwork of trying to get air carriers to get interested in Lincoln, have an actual desire to, to, to come here and get to contract or what it would look like talks, that's that first stage. That's still really vested, uh, in the staff, uh, in, in the office, and so, you know, Rachel and I and, and the team are now in that process right now. When you get to step two of it, that's where the new Air Service Advisory Council comes in. So once we get to a point where we think- So once we get to a point where we think that an air carrier is talking, well, what would this look like? What would a contract look like? Where would the routes be going? What kind of incentives might they need? That now gets to our Public Air Service Advisory Council. We want to get a variety of opinions on, is this a good deal for us? Does this make sense for the public? Is this something that people truly want and that we think as a public people would truly use? So that's step two. If it gets through that process, it then goes to our Board's Air Service Committee. The goal of that committee is to kind of blend the desires of the public with the needs and processes of the board and ensure that it's meeting all of those. It would then be that committee's responsibility to make recommendation to the full Board of Directors on whether or not this agreement makes sense. And then that final step of that process, just like the discretionary capital projects, would be a vote of the board in a public environment that, that basically calls out, this is what we're doing with it, this is the process it went through, and this is why we're making this decision. The goal of all of this, again, is that evaluation, oversight, transparency aspect, all things that were identified within the state audit. The way that this would show up on our agenda, we've already talked about this, it will be specifically called out as tax-funded actions. There would be a separate section that would be identified so that it is very clear when you look at the agenda that these are things that are all funded by taxes. So the last thing I would mention, John touched on it, this by no means ends our efforts to continue to find any funding anywhere that we can. Chad and I were talking about this earlier today, that we are constantly trying to work with the FAA, looking at state initiatives that may pop up from time to time, other grants, other efforts, so that we can lessen any sort of reliance we may have on getting these projects done. And that's one of the things about flexibility, is that it's not just other things pop up, it's other funding pops up. There could be an opportunity for us to get more bang for the buck out of federal grants and whatnot, and then we don't want to have to use the tax funds for that purpose, as we can perhaps roll them somewhere else. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, but again, I appreciate the time.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank each of the presenters. Are there questions from council people?
I got a question.
All right.
Councilman Duden. Thank you, Washington. Are you suggesting that what you don't use, you'd roll back to the city?
I don't know that there's a way to do that. I wasn't, I wasn't just suggesting that. I think it would be that it would be rolled to other things that were eligible for the, for the funded projects.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. You talked about having a master plan, a 10-year master plan. Is that a capital improvement plan, a CIP?
It is. Yep, and it's actually one of the requirements of the FAA, and we just, just got done with that process. If it, if it hasn't been, I think we're in the, either the concluding stages or just completed with it. And there was a significant public process that goes into that, multiple open houses and whatnot.
Okay. Did you have a lot of interest? Did people come out to that?
I don't know if you know the count, but we did have a significant number of people come to, and significant's a relative term. I mean, I mean, for an open house, there was a pretty decent amount of people that came to at least one of them. The other one maybe wasn't as, quite as well attended.
Okay. And so the 10-year master plan, it prioritizes the capital projects that you, you've alluded to. I don't, that's not a complete list, but those are your high priorities? Okay. And does it, were you giving us the priority, the projects in priority order, like this afternoon? Were those your highest priorities, or were they just a flavoring of the projects?
I think if, if we had the funds in our hands today, this would be our priority list. What we know is those priorities change over time, so I, I hesitate to say, yes, in nine months, this will be, the priorities will remain, remain the same. But I would imagine that 75% of that list would remain intact, and other projects that might come up would be very much in line with what I showed you today.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Shob. Okay. Councilman Beck, please.
Thank you. So the 10-year master plan, when, you say you're finishing that up, or it ought to be finished here shortly. Can you describe some of the, the overview of that 10-year master plan and what-
Chad is really our point for this. I can do it, but he's probably more eloquent than I am on this one, so.
Mr. Lay, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Again, Chad Lay, Director of Planning and Development at the airport.
Could you give us an overview as to that 10-year master plan and what appears on it? Because I haven't seen it before, Chad.
Yes, and just for everybody, I can forward a link after this. We do, as part of that public process, not only did we have open houses, but we also had a dedicated website so that people could track that process as we went through it. It starts, the very beginnings of the master plan starts out with basically an assessment and a survey, not only of the businesses that use the airport, but as the number of flight operations that go in and out. And then from that, tries to predict forecasts into the future for those operations. And then the last piece of that is looking at all of the capital assets that we have and coming up with a plan to maintain those. It's a little broader than the list of projects that were specifically shown for this. It's a much bigger picture kind of take, looking out 20 years. And so it does not specifically say, on year one, we think you should do this. It says, year zero to five, here's your most immediate needs. Year six to 10, here's kind of that next term, going all the way out, actually almost 40 years. So it is a big, big picture. And then from that, we took that master plan and started to dial in, what do we think are the most immediate needs that we have from, say, a safety standpoint with regards to the building that needs to be demolished? That was really more of an internal staff recommendation that used the master plan as kind of an informing tool. And also, one other thing that I would like to mention is it, part of the master plan, our consultant that was in charge of that also looked at the finances of the airport, looked at our current bonding, looked at our current revenues, and looked at all of these capital projects that we need to do for the next 20 years. And amongst the recommendations that it had in there, in addition to continue to look for additional grants and continue to look at rates and charges at the airport, it recommended that we most likely in order to overcome that hurdle would have to look into our tax levy authority. So that was actually a recommendation coming out of the master plan.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yep, thank you.
And then, part of that, I think, Chad, I think I'm good with you. Sorry, I, I don't want you to step here if, if you don't need to, but part of the operational levy discussion that we've been having has been a discussion between maintenance and air service and, and how, how do we go forward? How does L.A. move forward finding that balance? What's being proposed in terms of, you know, let's say, year one, you, you have the $3.7 million slowly but surely coming in, or not slowly but surely, actually coming in, you, you have the 3.7 million dollars to use. What do you hold back for potential air service opportunities? What do you plan moving forward? What's that balance?
So one of the, one of the things about air service that we have found is that you, you have a fairly long runway, use an aeronautical term as far as, yeah, like that. You have a fairly long runway in knowing about when service would start. So when we're discussing today, it's very unlikely that a carrier would come to us, say, as an example, and say, we're going to start service in 30 days. It's more, right now, the services that we're talking to that could be conceptual would be a year from now. And so I think what happens is that we look at the realistic nature of the funds coming in and what we might need. I think one of the things everybody has heard me say is that the general rule of thumb is about $1 million a route. That's, that's generally what you can expect in this day and age of, of MRGs. And so when we're looking at it, we're saying, what is the realistic possibility that we may, that we have a carrier right now that may need this? If there is a realistic possibility, then there is probably an evaluation of what and when would that be needed? Because typically on MRGs, they are paid after the fact, they're not paid in advance. So it could be that the service starts in one, say, fiscal or collection year, but you wouldn't actually need that payment until the next fiscal year. So then there's an evaluation that goes into that as well. So we would, in the way, it would basically be an ongoing evaluation and a year-by-year evaluation. You see it depicted, I think, this year on that project chart at 800,000 as far as a holdback. It's entirely possible if the carrier that we are potentially working with right now falls off and just decides, nope, that isn't going to happen, there aren't any other ones right now in there, we could decide, okay, well, that 800,000 should probably be used for projects as opposed to, it could be more impactful there. So I think it's a balance year after year.
Okay. And then, this might be a little further down the road, but, and perhaps this is a question for Mr. Olson, too. Moving forward, once we get past safety issues that have been identified by the board, how do you go about making determinations as to further investments thereafter? Is it a, is it a cost-benefit analysis? How, how does the board, or how do you might envision the board, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Mr. Olson, but how, how might, how, how might the board envision how it uses its funds going forward should this levy pass?
Yes, I think, really good question. Obviously, safety is important, so I'm glad you mentioned that first. I think if you get beyond that, then I start to think about return on investment. So as you think about the Enterprise Park, are there things we could do there that might accelerate growth, that could bring new industry in, that could generate more revenue for us? So I would, I would be thinking about something like that, return on investment. We've kicked around the idea of the need to do a business park master plan, and I think in Dave's mind and the board, we've talked about this, we do, we may need to bring in a real estate person here very quickly to help us think about that, and under that person's leadership, go down this path of an industrial park master plan, just to kind of think about some of these things that could answer the return on investment question.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that would be extremely exciting, I think, for the community to go through that process of a master plan for the industrial park, see what that looks like, see what that kind of level of investment looks like, but also see what kind of level of support that that could bring to Lincoln Airport Authority long-term as well, in addition to providing needed services in the community as, as well. I think that's a very exciting possibility as well.
I think there's one other facet of the prioritization is potentially that which could help some of the onsite businesses, those that are growing a lot, and if they have reason to grow and they, you know, there's improvements that benefit more than them, then those might fall moreover into our court in terms of how we could be helpful to them as well, so.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Councilman Beck, yes, I want to thank you for going down that, that avenue of questions because I think the, the idea that the Airport Authority could have an industrial or business park that is really vibrant and could really help to spur additional economic growth in Lincoln is very exciting, and I would echo what Councilman Becky has said about that. I have just maybe one more question and was going to ask you to back up just a little bit. When you came forward, Mr. Olson, you talked about the bonded part and the non-bonded part, and I totally understand the bonded part of the request. It's taking care of the debts that you have today. The non-bonded part is, is simply the, the projects that you talked about in the 10-year master plan?
Well, that's the chart that, that was the chart that Jerry had up there.
Yeah, the chart that Ms. Winkelman showed. And, and then also the potential for minimum revenue guarantee.
That had a placeholder in there of 800,000.
So that's in the non-bonded?
Correct, as in operational, non-bonded or-
So you call those operational?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make certain that I had the full scope of what operational or non-bonded was.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Were there any other questions from other counselors? All right. Thank you very much for coming forward. Really appreciated the presentation. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on this item, either in favor or in opposition? Mr. Kusick, welcome.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm Nick, Nick Kusick. I think all of you know that I've been on the, was on the Airport Authority till about a year ago now, so I certainly have a fair amount of knowledge about the airport after having spent 10 years there. But I want to make it clear that I'm not speaking on behalf of the Airport Authority. I'm speaking as a local businessperson, speaking as someone who has accumulated a fair amount of knowledge about the airport operation and the various obstacles they have out there. But also as a, as a citizen, they did a great job of highlighting, highlighting most all issues, so I don't want to duplicate those in the time that we have, but I think there's a couple of things that I wanted to kind of add to. One, just on the annual capital budget, I want to make sure that the council understands that every year's capital budget, except for the money they get from the federal government primarily, or during COVID, got COVID money, PPP or otherwise, largely the capital budget for the next year is funded by the surplus from the prior year. In my 10 years on the, on the Airport Authority, that amount ranged from about $1.2 million to probably about $2 million. So that's the total amount of money that's left over effectively at the end of each year that gets forwarded by the board to that next year's capital budget. So pretty small, given the amount of assets that are out there, as, as Mr. Olson kind of highlighted. I also want to highlight, because they did not touch on that, because none of them were involved, well, I think Dave Herring, Executive Director, Herring was, was involved, but I met when I was the board chair with the mayor, Mayor Gaylor Bear, about four years ago. It was probably not too long after she came on board, but we were talking finances, we were talking airport finances, we were talking minimum revenue guarantees, we were talking, why didn't we have more air service? We're also talking maintenance and roads and some of the other things that we're talking about today. And we pointed out a couple of things at that time in that meeting in the conference room in the mayor's office. One of them was a state law that allows cities of a primary class to levy .3 cents specifically for airport enhancements, or airports, excuse me, air service enhancements. And the other was there are constitutional prohibition interpreted to be, to eliminate the ability for the airport to use any funds, property tax or otherwise, for revenue guarantees. And at that meeting, we had a nice meeting, certainly understood, understood all the issues. We were given two charges when we left that meeting. The first was that if we thought the Constitution was indeed an obstacle for funding air service, we should change the Constitution. And I guess as someone who is not overly political, the, the charge of changing the Constitution was a pretty big charge. We in fact moved forward, a few of us who were passionate about that issue got together. Certainly Senator Eliot Boestar kind of led the charge in the legislature, it got through the legislature unanimously, and I don't think anything gets through the legislature unanimously, probably ever, except signee die, and even that doesn't always get through unanimously. And then as, as Mr. Olson indicated, it passed in Lincoln Lancaster County, it was actually 80, 83% voted in favor of that. So we changed the Constitution to allow us to do the kind of things that we want to do. The other thing that we were told clearly by the mayor's office and by the mayor was we have taxing authority. If you think you need it, if you as elected officials believe that the airport needs to use your property tax authority, operational and/or bonding, you need to use it. And we, the current board members had the courage, current board has had the courage to move forward with that. I would only make, I guess, one more, one more comment. I'm obviously speaking in favor of approving the levy. I just, not, not going to ask each of you to, to state publicly what your view on the state putting caps on the, on, on government entities right now, all the property tax conversations going on. Maybe some of you favor that. But in reality, I think you need to be thinking of your vote when you get to voting on this issue, that effectively a no vote would be capping the Lincoln Airport Authority at zero for operational purposes. And I ask you to think about that when you, when you vote, and I'd love to see a unanimous vote, would love to see a vote of at least four. So thank you very much. I appreciate the time. Answered, and happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Bowers, Councilman.
I just got one statement and then I got a question. No, I really appreciate the, the statement about the property tax cap, and I think that that really kind of does illustrate the vote that's in front of us. How long were you on the Airport Authority for?
10 years.
10 years. Based on what you know, when the Airport Authority did their public hearings, did they do everything in accordance with policy and things that were written out to have the public hearing to make the public aware of their budget?
For the budgets. You're asking specifically on the budget? Absolutely.
Okay, perfect.
We always had open, open meetings. All of our meetings, of course, are open, just like your, your meetings are, but all of our budget conversations were open. We had board meetings that were open to the public, that were just informational sessions and discussion sessions about our budget, so yes.
Awesome. I just wanted to get that for the, for the record.
All right, thank you.
And I'll go into why during the voting session.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who'd like to speak on this item, either in favor or in All right. Madam Clerk, you may move us forward.
I'll call item 5B. Item 5B is authorizing an application to the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission for Land and Water Conservation Fund grant, funding for renovation and expansion of the Antelope Park Playground.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. J.J. Yost, Assistant Director for Parks and Recreation. As I've been doing for the previous four or five years, I'm in front of you with this resolution today to support a grant application to a federal funding source called the Land and Water Conservation Grant Fund. This is an application we've been submitting successfully for many years and looking forward to doing so again this year. The particular project that we are proposing for this year's grant application is associated with the Antelope Park Playground. As you probably all know, the current Antelope Park Playground, the Play for All Playground, is an iconic and beloved part of our outdoor recreation opportunities here in Lincoln, but it's also approaching 25 years old. And so that play equipment and that play tile that it sits on are definitely aging out, and it's getting time to think about a pretty major repair renovation project. So this is a wonderful grant opportunity to do just that. And then what would be consistent with our outdoor inclusive playground strategic plan that we developed a couple of years ago, Antelope Playground, in fact, is the next location after the work that we're doing currently at Mahoney Park. Antelope Park would be the next place for an inclusive playground. So this would be a complete remove and replace of the existing playground, and it would be built to meet today's new standards and designs for inclusive play. Antelope Park happens to already be encumbered under the Land and Water Conservation Program. There have been previous federal grants there, land and water grants, that have provided for playground work there in the past. So unlike some projects where this would be an additional park being encumbered under that land and water program, in this case, it's already under that program, so really status quo. The grant, the maximum grant that we can apply for is $600,000. That's what we'll ask for. We actually think the project, while we're in a very preliminary stage, planning stage in terms of a cost estimate, we would estimate that that project in total will be in excess of about $2 million to do the complete renovation. So we would be asking for their maximum amount of $600,000, which has to be matched at a minimum of 50/50. The matching funds will come from our CIP. We've identified this as a project in our upcoming CIP. And then we will also look to our Parks, Lincoln Parks Foundation to conduct a capital campaign to support our effort. As they're in the process of finishing up a campaign for the Mahoney Project today, the inclusive playground in Mahoney, and we'll ask them to turn their attention next to Antelope. This is kind of a long-term process, the grant applications for land and water. The application is due here in September. We typically get some kind of notice of hopefully success after the first of the year. So in January, perhaps February of 2025, we'll get some kind of notification from the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission, who administers the grant on a local level. And then ultimately, if we're successful, the official notice to proceed or award comes from the National Park Service. And most likely, that wouldn't come until about a year from now. We would expect to get that notice probably in July, maybe August, September of 2025, and that would put us on the clock. We have three years then to use those grant funds, and that would play right into our proposed construction schedule that ideally, we would be renovating that playground in the summer of perhaps 2026, could be '27. We're going to try to time that, knowing that that playground is so heavily used. We're going to try to look at starting construction immediately in the spring, as weather allows, and being done in the fall, so that we only have it out of service for one year, because we will hear about it when that playground's not available. But it's time. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from councilors? Seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Yost. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on this item, either in favor or in opposition? Anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
We can now vote on these items. Item 5A is approving a tax levy request from Lincoln Airport Authority, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Weber.
Madam Clerk, or Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would move to delay one week until August 26th.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second, Duden. I appreciate that. So will that be a motion to delay just action or action and public hearing?
Let's go ahead and close public hearing.
All right, for action only.
Okay.
All right, any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
All right. That item will be delayed for one week, and it'll be voted on with the rest of the budget package we have. All right. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item 5B is authorizing an application to the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission for Land and Water Conservation Fund grant, funding for renovation and expansion of the Antelope Park Playground, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Weber. Any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
All right. That concludes public hearing resolutions. Let's move on to public hearing ordinances.
Item 6A is correcting the legal description of the area to be annexed by repealing and replacing ordinance number 21642 as previously adopted.
All right. Is there someone here to speak on this item, to present on this item? The Planning Department.
Very good.
All right. Good afternoon.
Steve Hendrickson, Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. Yes, it was our mistake, not the City Attorney's Office mistake, so just a legal description that we thought we had got it updated and we had not, so that's basically the reason for the correction.
All right. Great. Thank you very much. Did anyone have questions about this? Looks cut and dry. All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this item on the agenda? Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this item, either in favor or in opposition? Seeing none, we'll move ahead.
I'll call item 7A, text amendment 24009, request of the City of Lincoln Planning Department to amend Lincoln Municipal Code Section 27.72120, assessing buildings to clarify floor area in paragraph D and to describe exceptions not included in the maximum or expanded maximum accessory building square foot allowance, introduced by Carlson.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Beckis, moved by Schob in place of Carlson today. Thank you. Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7B is text amendment 24010, request of the Lincoln, excuse me, request of the City of Lincoln Planning Department to amend Lincoln Municipal Code Section 27.06.020, classification of use types by amending paragraph B, more than one main use, sub-paragraph two, to allow more than two single-family dwellings on lots or tracts located in the O1, O2, O3, RT, B1, B2, B3, B4, B5, H1, H2, H3, H4, I1, I2, and I3 districts, introduced by Carlson.
So moved.[1656.71]